Okay, so I'm going to call to order this committee meeting for policy. It is Tuesday, December 14th, 2021. It is 6:02. We are in the Nashville North Boardroom. Present tonight, we have Ms. Bishop, Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Ms. Ziem. We also have Ms. Raymond and Ms. Brown, and we have Mr. Parker and Ms. Carey.
Here.
Hi. Hope everyone's excited for the holidays that are coming up. We're trying to jam back as many meetings as we can before Christmas comes. So the first policy that we're going to be reviewing tonight, we have three policies that we're looking to rescind. The first policy is Policy 3442 in regards to directory information. Looking to rescind this policy as the information is contained in Policy JRA, Access to Student Records, FERPA. Do you want to speak to this, Mr. Parker?
No.
Oh, put your mic on. Sorry.
3442 is pretty dated. It came out in the 80s, and the information is contained in a more updated policy, the same information, so it was redundant.
Okay. Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Ziem? Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry, and I'm going to take my mask off to speak because I don't want that muffled. That southern drawl is already hard to understand. Anyway, I have a motion that I'm going to make. After I've made the motion, if I get a second on the motion, we can certainly talk about how we're going to go forward with policies. But in the meantime, the motion that I want to make is I move that this board forward to the full board, a motion from this board, that our chair speak to the Chair of the National Teachers Union in regards to the forming of a committee of teachers to review our policies per our strategic plan and in conjunction with the policy committee. Do I need to say it was a long one? So if you want me to repeat it, I will.
I'll need you to repeat it for when I write it down.
Yes, well, that's not just... Did everybody?
I'll second.
I made a motion that this committee forward to the full board for consideration that our chair speak with the NTU Chair, Adam Marku, regarding the forming of a committee of teachers to review our policies in conjunction with this policy committee per our strategic plan.
And I second.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. And that's why I said I am particularly in regards to the old policies that are just cleaning up. I don't have... Obviously, I'm not concerned about those policies. And if you pick out which ones those are and go ahead and just clean them up, just for the sake of cleaning them up, I applaud you for that because obviously it's just a lot of dead wood that makes us look bad. So I certainly don't have a policy for that. It is especially new policies and old policies. Tonight, in particular, the bullying policy jumped out to me because I think you all remember that we had to sit down with the teachers maybe two weeks ago. And there were things brought up that I personally agreed with. As is my normal, I don't always agree with anybody on everything. But I felt that the teachers... I'm always impressed by our teachers because they articulate their views and their concerns, their passion, their love of our children. They do an admirable job in communicating that. And some of the things they said broke my heart. One of the things was the pass fail. You know, the idea that a student is passed forward even when they haven't passed has always been a great thorn in my side. And then tonight, this bullying has always been another area of great concern because I think it is done at the expense of the majority of our other students. When the teacher has to spend more time disciplining a small minority of the students, the majority of the students pay the penalty. They are not able to learn the way they would if the whole time was spent in teaching. And so I... But I also... That was why when the strategic plan came up, I was so delighted to see that. I actually sat down with Susan. I do not remember her last name.
Porter.
Porter, thank you. Of all things, I should... She's such a gracious lady, I should remember that. But when I sat down with her, I was just elated that after all my years on the board, somebody was finally saying, "Let's make this a policy, and let's get the teachers involved." We may not always agree with them, and they certainly won't always agree with us. But if we do it correctly, in the right spirit, we will learn from each other, and we will become a closer team, which I believe in the concept of team. And so I would like to... So that's why I feel very, very strongly about this. And so I guess that's my hot air for right now.
So I was... I think what you're talking about is Policy JICK, which is the policy that's already on the books about bullying. And I was hoping we could look at that and see and tease out what works, what doesn't work, just start having the discussion about what a better policy looks like, if we need a better policy. This isn't a new one. We're not introducing one. This has been... This was revamped, I believe. The last time was in 2009, I believe. Let me double-check.
It was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago.
That sounds right.
And a lot of what's in there pertains to legally what we're supposed to do in regards to kiddos. It's not a lot of school conjecture. It's the RSAs that are in there in regards to what we're supposed to do in regards to children and bullying and incidents on school.
I would not... If I may?
Yeah.
I would not recommend removing anything from the bullying policy. And so it was recommended by the NHS.
Oh, Mike, sorry. Mr. Parker? You have to put your mic on.
It was recommended by the Nashville School Boards Association that the policy be adopted in full. It was majorly revamped, and so that's what we did. And so I wouldn't feel comfortable cherry picking through the bullying policy.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say that.
I also thought it was important because we have been hearing a lot from the teachers about what has been going on in schools. And there's a lot of, you know, what are we doing with these students? How are we addressing this? What's happening? And I thought it was important to highlight that we do have these policies on the books. And I mean, what we see and what we hear is obviously presented to us. And then what happens with the students after is privately protected information. And I thought it was important to highlight that we do have something here because I think because we don't necessarily hear the follow-up of kind of the loudness, it seems like we don't do anything. And I was just...
I'm not, if I may... I am not arguing with the fact that the policy needs to be reviewed. I would never do such a foolish thing. It does need to be. What I'm arguing with is over the years that I've been on the board, we have made policies. And then after the policies were made, teachers came in and said, "Did you consider this and thus and so?" And no, we had not because we're not in the classroom. We don't live with the classroom. And I agree... I understand what Mr. Parker is saying about the NHSBA. But I also agree that we are the second-largest district in the city, the state of New Hampshire. And as such, we are the second-largest. We have very little in common with any other school districts in this state other than Manchester, maybe a couple of others, maybe Concord, maybe even Salem. I understand they're a little larger. But certainly not with the majority for whom NHSBA made those policies, the strongest voice. I went to many of those meetings. At one time, I considered going to all of them. And I found... What I found was that most of the conversations revolved around smaller districts because they were a distinct majority. I'm not saying that you wouldn't learn anything from them. But I am saying that I think that clearly it was voted on and approved back, what, I don't know, six months ago?
2010.
Yeah, when... That was when Dr. Mosley was here, so it had to be at least two...
No, that's the social-emotional learning. That's the...
I'm not talking about the bullying now. I'm talking about the strategic plan.
Okay.
The strategic plan, to me, when I think of the word "plan", a plan means something you're going to implement. It's something you're going to do. We have not done that. We haven't even talked about it, even though I have tried to repeat it several times. And in looking at my conscience, I said, "Maybe you did it wrong, Sandra. Maybe you needed to make a motion and say what you think more than just saying the strategic plan said we were going to do this. Maybe you need to put your foot out and say, 'Do we want to do it or don't we?' It's in the plan. And if it's in the plan, then... And I understand, and I'm very empathetic to the pandemic and to the things that have gone on that have taken our attention away from things like policy committee. I mean, obviously, we haven't even had as many meetings of our committees because there was so much other on the plate that you couldn't do justice to too much more.
Right.
But I'm saying that I heard a clear... I heard the teachers very clearly saying that they do not feel that they are part of... And I think it would send... And who knows if Mrs. Raymond goes to Mr. Marku and if their board decides that they don't want to do it, then they've answered it. Then there's no conversation any further if they're not. But I thought I heard them saying, you know, "We have discipline problems and we have..." And all of these, all of the problems that they were talking about, ultimately, in my view, go back to a policy. There should be policies for all of those things. And so... And obviously, tonight, we have some new ones. Do I think all of the policies are critical for teachers to look at? Some are more critical than others, obviously. Obviously, it's more important for them, in my view, to look at bullying because they suffer the brunt of it. This policy talked about how the kids suffer the brunt of bullying. And I had to think about the teacher who had the... Who was bullied by saying she was the Chair of the Masturbation Committee. What an unacceptable thing. And so... But obviously, there's... I am told there's another place for that to be addressed. But I don't know. That's just more my thinking. And I don't want to... In the end, I am one vote, and I understand that. Believe me, I've lost more than I want to tell you, and I can take it.
Well, you're a valued voice, Sandra.
I'm a valued loser. So I... Thank you. Thank you all for listening.
So it sounds like you want to start really implementing the social-emotional learning pieces that we had agreed upon. And we really haven't been making traction on that because of COVID. And we're now starting to kind of look at it again more closely.
I ask myself, "How long do you talk about what you're going to do? And when do you start actually doing it?" And if... And I believe it will send a message to the teachers. Even... Let me say this. Even if Adam comes back and says, "Absolutely not. We don't have any teachers who would serve on it right now. We're really mad at you guys. No deal." Even if that happens, there are... As in any organization, there are varying opinions in his organization, just like there are on our board, just like there are in the Congress and the Senate and everywhere else. But it sends a message to every one of them that we were... That we heard them, that we realized that there were some areas that we need to revisit, and we want their input. We consider their input value. We are not top-down. We are bottom-up. Because to me, one of the concepts of good management is that you listen to the people who are on the ground. In my view, that's one of them. And there are books that support that. So I just think it would send a message to all of them, even those who said, "No, I don't want to do it", that at least we were saying, "We heard you, and we want to make you part of this committee so that we can have your input. And so it won't come after the policy's been established, but it will be before so that if there's anything we can agree on, we can incorporate it into these motions of these policies."
Do we have a plan on when this stuff is going to start, Ms. Raymond? For the committees that are outlined in the social-emotional learning plan?
So I think we're talking about a couple of different things at the same time. We have... I brought the strategic plan because I talked to Ms. Ziem earlier today. And I was like, "This kind of rings a bell, but I haven't looked at the strategic plan in quite some time because of COVID." So I went and I pulled out the strategic plan that I used to carry with me everywhere in 2019. And I don't think... I don't think that there's anything in here that says that we will have teachers review all of our policies before we enact them. What we do have is a couple of goals. One of the goals, goal number two, is to create a safe and nurturing learning and working environment. And under that goal, that's where it says some of the task forces that we would establish. And I believe, and I don't know if Mr. Parker can correct me on this, that we had some task forces running. We had building-based instructional teams, instructional leadership teams. We had district-wide SEL task force. We had a student behavior task force. I know we have the Middle School Steering Committee, the alternative program for the middle school task force that kind of got put on the back burner because of budgeting, and a safety committee. And I don't know which of these is still running. But it would seem to me that these task forces may or may not want to have input on some of the policies. But that's not the same thing as having... And these task forces are usually teachers, counselors, and admin. But I don't think they're meeting right now because of... First, they missed some because of COVID. And then once we understood that more about COVID and that we could be in the building safely with masks, they came back. But now we are working on the contract. And I believe that the teachers aren't doing any of their... Any of these kinds of task forces and stuff until there's a contract, which hopefully will be before the end of this calendar year. But I don't... I can't promise one way or the other. So I think Mr. Parker and Ms. Carey, do you know off the top of your heads if the task forces were meeting before the contractual shutdown? And then if there were some... Because it seems to me like the behavioral task force would want to be... We would want to get their input on something like bullying and any updates to JIC and some of those things. But I don't think that they would need to talk about directory information. You know, so I think there's...
Can I ask her a question?
A balance.
Yeah.
In relation to what you're saying. I only reviewed this with Mrs. Porter.
Yeah.
So I only... And I... When you're saying task force, I didn't see this as a task force. I saw this as in conjunction, just what I said here. And maybe I misunderstood that. So I would like to, you know, hear from those of you who were on... Mr. Guarino and Mrs.... What's your name? I'm sorry. I don't even know my own name half the time. But because I didn't see it as a task force. I saw this as actually part of the... And I don't know how much of detail that you actually discussed when it... When this was put. All I know is that Mrs. Porter gave me the distinct impression that the teachers... If I'm not totally crazy, she gave me the impression that the teachers would look at these policies first and then... And I don't even remember that she said it like it was all going to be together, like the teachers here with us, which would be fine with me as well either way. But I'm just saying, those of you who were here back then, can you share with me whether I misread... Because again, Mrs. Porter was the only one I spoke to. And I'm sure a lot of that was in the conversations that you had when you made the policy.
So I was here during that time, and I was part of it.
And I certainly wasn't trying to offend you or exclude you, Mrs. Raymond.
But if anybody wants to look at that to refresh their recollection or... It's on our website as well.
Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I should have reviewed it before I came. But I think these task forces, if I'm not mistaken, have to do with implementation of the plan. So we have a plan. We say what we're going to do. And then we make some goals. And then if my thinking is correct, these task forces were going to be... Or these committees are task forces. We're going to get together and implement the plan. And so I think maybe that Ms. Ziem was thinking that it was one task force. There's actually a number of task forces looking at different aspects.
Thank you.
And that's implementation. And when we implement the plan to reach those goals, we obviously have to... It's going to impact our policies, might have to change to implement those, to get to our goals. So I think that's what's going on in my own mind about... But I think it's a great idea what Ms. Ziem has done here because we have a plan. You know, we put a lot of effort into it, but we haven't put much effort in implementing it and putting it to... It's just sitting on a shelf collecting dust. And we have to get it. We have to look at it and say, "We wanted to do all these things, and we need the input of the teachers." The input of the teachers is very valuable. I agree 100% with Ms. Ziem. So I think that we should implore... We should ask administration to start looking at this plan, start getting these task forces together. And like Ms. Raymond said, it might be a problem right now because... But that, you know, because of the contract negotiation. But that doesn't mean we can't have a... We can't have a motion to direct administration to implement the plan and to put together a task force, including teachers, to implement that plan. That's my take on this whole situation. So I'm going to go online and look at it.
So...
Oh, you got it, Ex.
I happen to have two copies because I was in not about carrying it around for a while. Well, because if something came up, I wanted to look it up and see how did this fit in. And I know... I'm sorry, I'm talking again. But in our last budget, the budget was tied to the strategic plan, and we were able to say, like, "This falls under 2.4" or whatever. I thought Mr. Parker was putting his hand up, but maybe I'm wrong.
I was going to say, most of the steering committees, some I don't recognize from that you mentioned in that plan. But we didn't meet in September, and we were going to start in October, November, give teachers like that first month to get back in. So we didn't start the steering committees right away, right away. And so some of the ones I'm responsible for, for instance, have not met yet because of the work to do.
Right.
We have agendas all ready to go. But because Dr. Sarfey and I split up the steering committees at the chair. So... And it doesn't make sense to have a steering committee with just one or two people. So it defeats the purpose, so...
And I think the most time that we spent on the social-emotional plan was when we were doing our first year... Well, not your first year on the board, but our first year this time around was going through the budget, like what Ms. Raymond was saying, when we were going through the budget and saying, like, "We're going to need this many more social workers and school psychologists in order to implement this part of the plan." And then the second round of budgets came, and we were really focused on what do we need to get kids back in school? And that was kind of where our budget talk was. And then I think now that we're back... I think now that we're back in school and we're kind of... I don't want to say worked out the kinks of COVID, but we certainly know more than we did...
Living with them better.
How to live with COVID. And I feel like we created a budget this year that allows us to live with COVID, that this is absolutely something that we can start re-implementing and getting the task force going. I would be a little hesitant about making a motion to put a timeframe on this just because I don't want to put additional pressure on the teachers going through the contracts.
There was no time in my motion.
But I do agree with you that I think at a certain point, a motion to say, "We need to start implementing this", or at least starting the process of implementation, should be February 1st.
Well, I didn't...
And I'm not saying we need to do it tonight.
I didn't... I intentionally didn't put a date because it obviously has to be worked into the calendar for everybody. But in specific, one of the... If you think about the input that our teachers gave that night, much of it could be brought right back to bullying. We have a lot of bullying, too much bullying, in my opinion. And for the teachers not to have an opportunity before we pass a policy to... And I think it needs to be... It needs to be designed so that they specifically... They don't have to... In other words, if I didn't get the email with copies of these policies, I would not have known these policies, so I wouldn't have reviewed them. So our teachers... I would tell you that the majority of our teachers are not even aware that these policies are on here tonight. So they have not looked at this policy on bullying. And if anybody, in my view, if there is any policy that they should have an opportunity to review, it's bullying. Because I believe we have... I personally believe we have a big problem in bullying. I do. I'd lay my life in front of a car, but that's how much I believe it. So I would... If the board rules against me, again, I can take it. I am tough.
So even if we don't discuss number two, even if we don't discuss Policy JICK, it's still on the books. This is what we have. This is what the administrators have to fall back on when they're making decisions about discipline. All we were doing tonight was updating it to say that we, like, re-approved this year. We can readdress it again in a month. But this is what the policy is that we already have, that the teachers and the administration is supposed to... Are supposed to follow.
And Jen, again, I understand what you're saying. And if in the end, you and Ray... But I still think that it, as part of this committee, it goes to the full board. And I want the full board to hear my motion. Even if it fails tonight, I want them to hear it. It doesn't mean they're going to vote for me. I may be the only person who votes for it. And if I am, so be it. Then I got slapped down, and I can take it. Because I think we need to be able to win and lose. You know, when we are bad losers, what does it say to our children? What am I saying to, as a role model, when those student body kids are watching me and I throw a temper tantrum? What does it say to them? It says, "I'm a leader, and that's the way leaders behave." I don't want... I never want... That would... My 14 years on this board, if I thought I gave that kind of leadership unconsciously to those students, it would tell me that my 14 years were wasted, that I should never have been on this board because I did the worst thing I could do. I was a bad role model. Kids learn by what they see. Our teachers are an example. The fact that they keep their tempers... The best teacher is the teacher who can say no and say it with sugar dripping out of both sides. Because that's the teacher who says, "I love you." And that I disagree with you doesn't mean I don't care about you. I will always care about you. You have my unconditional support. But I do not agree in this case, and I will not tolerate it. So again, I can take no. I can. But I would like my motion voted on, and I would like it to go to the full board so that in my mind, at least, I have said to the full board, we need to... We need to start... Our teachers need to have a clear voice, a clear voice. And if they don't have a clear voice, we're going to hear more and more. I mean, it is hard enough what they are facing without thinking that they don't have our ear. ear even. And I don't, I don't, I don't want to be part of that, as far as my role in it, but if you, but I respect at the same time, and Mrs. Raymond, I, I don't know if I've ever said this to you, but I have great respect for you as a chair, the fact that you have kept as calm as you have in the face of a tornado, I think the tornado you sat through was worse than Kentucky. I'm just telling you, I, I could not have held, I could not have held my tongue, I could not have been as disciplined or as soft-spoken as you were, but I say to you honestly, it was the best example you could set for your children, and for our children, for the children of our city, of our state, of our nation, literally. And, and so I, it's, enough, you see how, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Guarino?
I, I just wanted to read from the strategic plan, and this is the Student Behavior Task Force, so that's the, this district will form a district-wide task force to examine the norms for student behavior, and it says, twice per year, the task force will inform the Board of Education Policy Committee of its progress in aid in aligning district policies. So you were right about that, that these, but it was more than just one committee, there was, there was different committees. It also has membership in, in the, in, in the task force, includes building administration, cross-section of teachers, representative cross-section of school counselors, psychologists, et cetera, center of behavioral specialists, and ELL representative. So I, I think it's a, a good idea that we ask administration to start implementing the strategic plan, and if and when, like, like you say, it's, it's not, you know, it's easy to ask them to do something, or tell them to do something, it's hard to implement it, because it's gonna take some time, but these are long overdue, we've had the strategic plan a while. If we can, if we can get administration to stop moving on some of these task forces, especially the behavior task force, that, that's one I, I think that everyone would agree that is.
Thank you.
Is in need right now. So I'm gonna vote for, for this motion.
Can I, can I see what you wrote down, just so I can write it properly?
Well, you mind if I, do you mind? I certainly don't, but you may not be able to.
Mr. Guarino, can you pass that down to Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Parker and.
I'm sorry.
Diane, is it?
Yes.
Mr. Parker and Ms. Carey.
Ms. Carey, thank you.
Apologies.
Oh, I'm so bad.
Brain blank.
And that, that if, if it, I, I would like, so if, if it, the, the part of what he read that jumped out to me was twice a year, that was never mentioned to me, and I did not read that, I admitted that to you. So that was a good catch for me.
Yep.
And so if, 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 if that, so if, if every six months they sit down and review, I don't know what's coming up.
No, they just inform the, the policy committee twice a year, it doesn't mean they meet twice a year. They're, they come to the policy committee and inform the policy committee twice a year, but they, doesn't mean that they meet twice a year, they can meet like once a month.
Oh.
That's, that's how, what I believe it says.
So it doesn't seem that was, there was any in conjunction with, is what, is there?
Well, it says they inform the policy committee to make sure that, that, that what they're, that our policies are in line with what they, what their findings are.
Well, because it would seem that it would make sense to me if you, if they had this, if indeed they had made this committee, and they, and then you had members on it currently, then you could try to say, these are the policies we're going to be reviewing, because Dr., Mr. Parker and Mrs. Mrs. Bur, no, but you as well.
Ms. Guarino, sorry.
Yes, I do know your name, and I could have pulled it if I'd sat here long enough. Anyway.
At least I have a hey you, too.
That's what I do, actually, but you, you could, you know, you, you seem to do a very conscientious job with trying to weed through and get them current, make them look like we know what we're doing, and, and that's a great thing.
Just looks.
So if you, no, no, it's not just, no, no, that's not just look. So you, if you could, if somehow you, they, they were funneled through, and, you know, like you said, these are the policies we're gonna try to look at in the next three months, or the next six months, or whatever, so that that committee, when they met, would, would have an idea what was coming up, would make sense to me, but I don't know if that is in court. And that's obviously, those details can be worked out with, with, when Mrs. Raymond talks to Adam, if it goes any further than this, if it doesn't go any, again, if it doesn't, I don't even feel it's a loss if, if it's declined, because I feel that for those teachers out there, yes, I'll just finish real quick, for those teachers who weren't, who may not ever come down here, at least they heard that we tried, I hope they did, at least some of them, I would want them to think that this board hears them and wants to put foot to their message. And I'm, Mrs. Carey, please.
Ms. Seem, I can appreciate what you're saying, may I just make a suggestion, because right now, the bullying policy that we have is dated, and the NHSBA has recommended that we make these changes, so our policy would just be reflecting and mirroring what the NHSBA is recommending, and then later on, to your point, perhaps later on revisit it, but at least revisit it from a current document, rather than the dated document that we have right now, because we do have to have something up there, and then if it is to be revisited at a later date, it's the more current policy.
And I know that we're jumping ahead with this policy, and we're kind of taking things out of order, but for clarity, I was under the impression that these updates were to bring it in line with current state law.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I would really hate to be, I mean, state law takes precedent, but I certainly want to be following state law.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I really would like to suggest that we go back to the order of the agenda, or decide what to do with Ms. Seem's, Ms. Seem's motion, and then go back to the order of the agenda, because I don't think it applies to some of the initial items, like the rescinding of the old ones. Maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I, I think we have, we have a, a question on the floor right now, we can, we can resolve that, and then we're gonna go back to the agenda, that's what I assumed that we were doing. It's not like, just because we vote for this and advance this, it doesn't have anything to do with the other business on here, that we could, we could bring those other things to, to update the, the way administration has presented them. I, I mean, I have no problem with that, this, this does not preclude any other business that we have on the agenda. So I, I think what Ms. Seem wants to do is to try to get a vote on this question that we have now, we'll advance that to the full board and see, see who, if, see if it's approved or not, and then we can move on to the agenda, all the other business that we have.
Okay. Then I'll call a vote. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay. Is that good?
Thank you.
I stole your.
Well, you think you got it right.
Okay. So let's go back to the initial point, which was looking to rescind policy 3442 in regards to directory information. So I move to rescind policy 3442.
And this is not being replaced, it's just a resend.
Yep.
I'll second.
Okay, on the motion to send policy 3442 to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes, Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm keeping notes, too. Okay, the next policy, I move to send policy 8210 Employee Work Schedules and Benefits to the full board to be rescinded.
And do I remember correctly that they, that those are all recorded in other places, so that there is a duplication as well?
It's collective bargaining agreements.
Collective bargaining, thank you, that's, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, on the motion to send policy 8210 Employee Work Schedules and Benefits to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes, Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
And the last one, I move to send policy 8217 to the full board, sorry, I move to send policy 8217 Resignations to the full board to be rescinded.
I'll second.
I will not vote for this, only because I, I think it's, it may be redundant, but I don't think, I think it is not unreasonable to ask somebody to give you, when possible, 30 days' notice, and I just think it, even, even, even if it's duplication, it's a reminder, and it's a good reminder, and so I, I would like to see it stay, even though it's just a reminder.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I understand that we're saying we can't enforce it, if somebody says, I'm not, I'm just not gonna do it, I can't break their arm, and I certainly wouldn't even try, but, but I, I just think it's a good reminder, so I will be voting against this one.
Do we have something on the books in regards to employees at will?
Well, the at-will employees would be employees that weren't.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The at-will employees would be employees that aren't governed by a collective bargaining agreement.
Sorry, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I think you know what I'm asking.
Employees aren't a member of a union, they're at-will employees, but the reality is, you know, sometimes, you know, we, we can't hold somebody or force someone to give us a 30-day notice, sometimes we're lucky if we get any notice at all, or people will just not show up, or use their vacation time, so I just don't think it's a realistic, I just felt it wasn't realistic to, to continue to have this. I mean, we have it in other places, that, you know, we'd like the notice, but to have it as a standalone policy, and to be enforceable, I mean, how do you force that if somebody's long gone?
Right.
And we rarely get, because I immediately went to her, we rarely get 30-day notice, it's rare.
Yeah, oh, and I'm sure you rarely get it.
And so it doesn't make sense to have a policy, in my view, that we cannot enforce.
It's all right, again, I just, I just think that as a reminder, it, maybe, maybe they won't do it, maybe they, maybe they aren't able to, obviously circumstances alter cases, not everybody, you don't plan things that happen to you in life, but when they can, I think it's professional courtesy.
Oh, yeah.
And I think as a reminder, that it is professional courtesy, it's a good, it's a good thing, anywhere, anywhere it can remind them. I think that when we remind each other of, of best behavior, best practice, I don't, I see no, I, I see no harm, and I see it as, as beneficial on, on occasion, so, but it's all right. If I lose, I lose.
So on the motion to send 8217 to the full board to be rescinded, Ms. Bishop votes yes, Mr. Guarino?
I vote no.
And Ms. Seem, no?
No.
Okay.
When that happens, does it stay as 8217, or does it need to go back to, like, return to the committee at some later date to get a letter designation?
Mm-hmm.
I asked two questions, I'm sorry, which one of those?
Both.
Okay.
So it needs to, we have to present a new policy with the new letter heading on it, so this will stay on, and then we'll bring it back to the board in the correct format.
I told you she's good. Well, you've obviously worked very hard at it, and that's commendable.
I just looked at the dates and was like, 1987?
Yes.
There's gotta be something better.
That was even before I was on the board.
Right.
Can I make a recommendation, instead of 30 days, to have it be a two-week notice, because that's more of the industry standard for two-week notice versus a 30-day notice?
I think that's.
I think when we, when we bring it back, with, with the.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And now on to policy J I C K, Pupil Safety and Violence Prevention Bullying, this is the updated bullying policy that better reflects the laws. I know Mr. Parker just touched on this in our previous discussion, but looking for a motion to send this to the full board for approval, and then if we want to continue discussing it, or. Yes, Mr. Parker?
It's pretty straightforward, and pretty detailed, it teases some things out.
Oh, put your mic on, sorry.
It teases some things out, and it includes the adults, as well as students, as well, and so even though it's longer, I think it's more clarifying, in terms of process and procedure.
What do you mean, the adults? I'm not sure what you're referring to, Mr. Parker.
Like teachers or staff, staff members?
And I was told specifically that that's not the case, that, that the bullying, I was told that, that, that they come under a different, because I, again, I specifically thought of the lady who had, who was so mistreated by the kids, that I thought she was bullied, and they said that, that this policy pertains only to students, now, I don't present.
In terms of, for instance, in some of them, any school employee or volunteers who may witness or receive a report of bullying, you know, going to a trusted adult or to the administration, not necessarily that of teachers being bullied, but the role of, you're in a school, a student comes to you, or you witness something, just the steps that you can.
I was specifically told that she could receive no protection from this policy, that, because I said, you know, and I, it was interesting to me that, that our maximum policy, obviously, I'm sure you're more than aware than me, that the, the hardest penalty we have for our students is to keep them out of school, they get expelled, and so, and then they can get the other, I think there are classes where they can actually send them to remedial type things, am I correct with that?
Yes.
So do we, do we, can you share with me, I, I, I've heard, like, it goes again to the social emotional learning, and I would think that's part of that.
Well, yes.
So that will come under the task force that we were, that we talked about in the strategic plan?
It seems to me, I'm not familiar with some of those task forces, as stated in the plan, that was implemented before my time, I did, I'm sure I read it when I first started here, but I can review that, and so, again, when I say it mentions adults, you know, adults, if you see something, you witness something, you have, a student comes to you with a concern, okay, what do you do? How do you go about it, what's the process, you know, and so I just think it's a much more robust policy and details, with some of the details that they've teased out here.
Ms. Seem, also, Section 12 talks about response to remediate substantiated instances of.
I can't hear you.
Section 12 in the policy talks about response to remediate substantiated instances of bullying, and it talks about consequences and appropriate remedial actions for a student or staff member, so there's a whole section.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And Section 6.
Again, respectfully, I won't vote for this, because I believe this is, this was one of their chief complaints, and I believe that we, before even updating that date, that date's been that way a long time, and I don't think another couple of weeks is gonna kill us, and I think it could send a very strong message to, which I'm, which I'm very concerned with, I want the teachers that I know to know that we care about their concerns, about the misuse that they are suffering. I mean, that lady with that masturbation thing, that, I never heard of anything so awful in my life, I, all I could think was how you would feel if you're, if you were a teacher, and your mother was proud of you, and all of a sudden she walks up and says, oh, so you're involved with that? What are you doing? I mean, I, I just can't imagine, it broke my heart, so, so I will be voting against this, but it's all right.
So I, I think another piece of this is, is even if we don't have a policy on the books, if something were to happen, because it's a law, the law is always gonna trump our policies, so no matter what our policy, our current policy is, or whatever policy is left on the books, when it comes time to deal with these situations, we have to look at the law.
And I don't disagree, I absolutely don't disagree with you. My, my unfortunate understanding is that, that we are way less than law, that we don't come. come anywhere, the, the police department enforces, they have a much, they have a bigger hammer to, to bang on the table, if you will. The biggest hammer we have is remedial learning and, and expulsion, which a lot of those kids, that's a reward for them. I understand that. And I don't, I don't want holistic. I'm not looking to penalize every child. What I'm saying, I'm looking for, for us to set an example of those who do it constantly, so that it says to those who are mimicking them, "There's going to be a penalty if you do that, don't do it." And so that, what, I don't think it will stem it completely, but I think it might diminish the, how bad it is. And if it, if it even diminishes it a little bit, then it's worth its weight in gold.
Sorry. Put your mic on, please.
Is there occurrences of bullying in the high schools, in our schools? Of course there are. Okay? You put 1,000 teenagers in a building together, you're going to have instances that happen. Okay? But I don't want the impression that it is running rampant and unchecked. Okay? So I just have to make, be very specific when I say that. And issues of bullying, when proven, investigated and proven, consequences are meted out, and it can be arranged of consequences, depends on the level of the bullying. Okay? Somebody's mean to you in an instant is not bullying, they're just being mean to you in an instant, it's not an ongoing pattern. And so, so I just want to be, be clear, bullying is taken very seriously. If the police need to be involved, then they're involved. Okay? Parents are certainly involved, we have a range of things. We're not going to expel you unless it's something really, really egregious. Okay? Suspension, yes. Okay? Maybe a different placement. Detention, in-house suspension, and we also like to mediate, get at the heart of what is causing the friction in the relationship. So the response, this is the law, but it's nuanced, and based on the situation, we get administrators involved, parents involved, counselors involved, okay, to make sure we're not missing anything. Okay? Awarded to us, we see, we see it, we witness it, we investigate it. And we talk to all parties concerned, and then we decide what action is going to ameliorate that situation and causing the behavior to stop. Okay? So it's, it's comprehensive, it involves all the relevant adults in a child's life, you know? So it's not a one-size-fits-all within this law, which I believe we need, okay, to update it, it's more current, all right? And our handbooks and our discipline policies will reflect accordingly.
Mr. Guarino?
I, I think that, I agree with Ms. Seem that we, we need to have teacher input because, and, you know, to update or to tweak our bullying policies. However, it takes time, and, and I, I have no doubt that we, we can't bring this policy or any other policy that needs to be changed based on, on their advice. So I don't, I don't think that if we vote for, if we vote for this now, it's not going to preclude teachers' input in the future for tweaking either this policy or any other policy that we need. But right now, I think we need to update this, but that's the message I'm getting from administration is, we need to comply with the law right now, we can change it later as, as, as needed. So, so I am going to support this, but I, not that I disagree with anything that Ms. Seem said, but, but because I think that we can probably make it better in the future, and that's going to take time.
Right.
So I, for those reasons, I, I'm going to support advancing this, these changes to the full Board.
And I, I think to combine what both of you are saying, and what, what all of us are saying, and I'll, I'll get to you guys in just one second, I know you both have your hands raised. There's the response to bullying, and then there's the piece in the social-emotional learning that gets to the heart of why kids are bullying. And that's the, that's the, the stuff that comes before the consequence. That's the having, you know, being better able to identify a different way of meeting the students they're at, which is what we're doing in the social-emotional learning plan. If we follow this plan, this strategic plan that was created by you guys, which was intense, and I, I was really excited to join the Board and start implementing it, because it, it falls in line with really what I believe in regards to students and raising adults. That's the meat of where we stop the bullying, is we, you know, in second grade, we start helping kids identify what their feelings are. If they're angry and upset, what's a different way of, of responding to those internal stimuli? How do you talk to your peers when they're making you upset, so it doesn't turn into a playground fight? Those are all of the pieces that prevent bullying in the future, by teaching kids how to identify their emotions, how to move past those negative emotions safely without dismissing them, but acknowledging them. That's the piece that we need to start implementing more in schools, and that's, that's the social-emotional learning piece. At this point, though, we don't have second graders, we have high schoolers, and what's happening is they're getting into fights, and it's coming here, and the teachers are having to deal with it, and it's at a level that, you know, people are saying that they're uncomfortable with. So we have to respond to those instances that didn't have the SEL prevention that we're trying to implement, and those instances, we have to respond in regards to legally what we're supposed to do. There are legal definitions of what bullying is, there's legal definitions of what retaliation is, there are legal definitions of what a victim is. Those are the pieces that we need to have updated, because if we start consequencing somebody who we've labeled as a bully using the National School District definition of what a bully is, that may not necessarily be the same as the legal one, because we have a policy that doesn't match. We're then putting a different spin on things, and we're not following the law. So I think by updating this policy so that it reflects what we need to do now is important, but in order to get to what Ms. Seem wants, which is, and what, I think what we all want, is how do we prevent this from happening? How do we meet the needs of the students without consequencing, without expulsion, without, you know, getting to that level? That's the piece that needs to be implemented, which is what she was talking about in the beginning. So I think this is a much bigger picture, and this is just a piece of, you know, the dominos that need to fall in order to change the overarching feeling of what schools seem like right now. I'm obviously in support of it. But I think whether or not we take the teachers' opinions in mind in regards to this, we want to implement those changes, but we can't rely on teachers to change what is an RSA at the state level. So I know Ms. Brown and Ms. Raymond were both tromping at the bit over there. Heather's hand was lower, and I saw it earlier, but do you guys want to? I love hearing Jimmy laughing. I don't know if it's me or if it's something else.
Sorry. So I don't have a vote on this policy, but I do have thoughts, and my thought is grammar, and-
Nuh-uh.
Ms. Bishop knows me well enough, having worked in the same office as me in the past, that grammar drives me crazy. So in this policy, it's pupil, pupil, pupil until Section 3, and then it turns to student, and then it goes back to pupil, and then it goes back to student in Section 6, and it's driving me absolutely nuts. So if we could just pick student, because that's the more modern term, whenever this is approved or disapproved or whatever, that would make me super happy. And the other thing is we use parent, and we say parent includes parents or legal guardians, and then later in the policy, in a lot of the updated sections, we say parent slash guardian or parent or guardian. And I would really like to just-
The guardian?
Guardian or parent slash guardian, and not lump it all into parents, which again is just, like, quibbles and has absolutely nothing to do with the substantive part of the policy. But it drives me crazy.
I don't mind amending, I don't, amending it on with, with those changes. Yeah. So, and I, being myself, I circled all the parts that bother me, so- Didn't highlight them in coordinating colors, Heather?
I didn't. I just circled on every page, every time it bothered me. So-
Give me a coffee button, you can take care of that.
Yeah, so if anybody wants it, you can have my coffee.
Okay. So we'll send it on-
I'm sorry, I'm so obnoxious.
So I'm going to move to send this on, and then-
Wait, I think, I think-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Brown had something.
I just meant, instead of saying, like, amended with, we'll just have them presented at the Board.
Ms. Brown?
I did double-site it, so that's why it's a different one on the front page. Sorry.
Thank you. So in regards to what you were talking about, Ms. Bishop, for changing the culture, last night, we actually had a presentation at the Curriculum Evaluation Committee with an update from the MTSSB, which is the Multi-Tierred System of Support for Behavior. And as you mentioned, they're going through each different school at the building level, seeing what's working and what's not, and how they can support students. We also have another thing that went through a few weeks ago, a $500,000 contract to bring in individuals to help, behavior analysts, to help us, help students right now in this transitional period, using some COVID relief funds. And I think that's really important to what you're referencing as far as a culture shift to change this. But I think what we're seeing right now is there's an escalation in violent behaviors going on in the schools, that we have to admit and we have to recognize that, and I think that my, my fear with adopting this policy right now is not, I think it's great, I think there's a lot of good details in here. However, I think that there's also a few things that may conflict with procedure versus policy versus our student handbook versus enforcement, and whether things are actually being enforced. So I do feel like this particular policy pertains more to repeated offenses, but I think it's also important that we find a way to address an immediate one-time offense, because just because you're having an outburst of behavior that's really disrupting the classroom, it's really scary for teachers and scary for other students. We need to make sure that we are enforcing, and we have an enforceable policy and enforceable rules in our student handbooks, and that we're following up from a Board level to make sure that that is, that we're keeping everyone safe. And also, you know, I know it sounds like treating this as an acute problem while we are truly making an effort to treat the long-term systemic problem. So again, I'm similar to Ms. Raymond, I don't actually have a vote on this particular committee, but if you choose to move it forward, I would recommend maybe putting a timeline in place adjoining to it, that you will have a true conversation about how to mitigate acute outbursts. I don't know, there's probably some fights in the hallways and whatever else you want, however, some, there's probably a fancier way to say it.
Fussiness.
Fussiness. But what's, what's really going on in schools? And honestly, there's a lot in here, there's stuff in here about cyberbullying. The social media is a real threat in our community right now. We need to have a larger conversation on it, and we need to have a real procedure in place on how to follow up on it. And so I do get nervous, because if we look at the previous time this policy was updated, I think it was, was it in the 80s?
2010.
2010. Okay.
Pretty much.
I mean, it might as, okay, yeah. It's, I, I don't want this to go in the back burner. I, so what I would suggest is consider putting a timeline that we will have a discussion with teachers as Ms. Seem, because I think, and they need to know that we want to hear from them, and follow up with administration to make sure it's happening. And, you know, have a Board member there present, so we can hear what's going on, a liaison, but don't just let it slide, because there's a lot of stuff going on, there are a lot of balls in the air right now, and, but this should be a priority.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I agree. Mr. Guarino?
I, I agree with, with what Ms. Brown said, and, and I think that what, what she's looking for is the same thing that Ms. Seem is looking for, which is a conversation involving teachers and, and to, and to start looking at, you know, what's, what's going on. So I think that's going to be in, when it comes to the full Board, that's going to be in Ms. Seem's first motion that she made. But this, I think, is separate and has to do with what Ms. Bishop was saying, which is, you know, being in line with the law. So, and, so I, I am in agreement completely with what Ms. Brown said, but I think we should deal with it based in two different motions, in the way it is. Yeah.
Ms. Raymond?
I just have a question about who makes sure that those different balls in the air are talking to each other? Like the, you know what I mean? Like, we have this new group with Mount Prospect coming in to offer behavioral and mental health student services to students, and then we have the, I always get the acronym wrong.
MTSSB.
MTSSB. I get it confused with the, the MTSB, like the Boston Transport, but I know what they are. So we have them looking at our schools and looking at what needs to be updated, and then we have theoretically the Student Behavior Task Force when it gets up going again. So who makes sure everybody's talking to them, one? And two, how do teachers who want to be involved with the task forces go about doing that? Because I think we had people assigned to them pre-COVID, but COVID just took everything and, like, blew it up.
Didn't I, didn't I see in the strategic plan that we were looking at getting a social-emotional learning director, who would be-
Yeah, I completely died with budgets.
But it's in there, it's been stated that that's recommended, that we have somebody kind of heading.
Right. But in the meantime, because I don't know how far our budget will stretch going into this next year with the, you know, $80 million deficit that school funding will be facing from the state. In the meantime, like, who helps the balls talk to each other so that we can make sure that this is a cohesive, you know, effort, and not just different people doing different initiatives all on their own?
Well, I finally answered that. I didn't mean, did I cut you off? I apologize.
No, that's, I mean, that's really the question, because, I mean, Ms. Seem is right, we need teachers involved, but we also need to hear from the MSST-
MTSSB.
MTSSB. It took me a long time to get the JSSBC right, too. We also need to hear from them, you know what I mean, and get all these people, like, at a roundtable together or something.
Well, before the contract discussions, we were, we have a history of meeting between Dr. Softy and myself, with the various steering committees, with the building principals and the building teams, with their psychologists, social workers, guidance counselors, all right? And so, you know, teams within buildings talk to each other, they talk to the central office, we meet with them regularly, K through 12, so that there's symmetry in what we're doing for each level, all right? And so what you have outlined is what we attempt to do, attempt to do, whether it's creating new plans or social-emotional issues, we discuss together to see, are you seeing this? Okay? What are you seeing? Okay? And because I know Dr. Softy meets regularly with her elementary principals, I meet regularly, regularly with the secondary principals, and particularly transition grades, you know, what do we need to have in place?
This is-
Do it. You know it.
Jessica.
Nope.
Jen Bishop, excuse me. I'm sorry. The Student Behavior Committee, Dr. Parker, Mr. Parker, excuse me, is, is that current, and are there people on that committee meeting regularly, or has that been sort of back-shelfed?
Outside of-
Mike, please.
Mike.
Outside of what was in the strategic plan- Outside of what was in the strategic plan that was read, right now to my knowledge, we do not have a K-12 Student Behavior Committee. You'll find similar committees housed in individual buildings, like at the high schools and variation of that in middle schools or the elementary.
So I think.
But at K through 12, I am not aware of it ever existing.
So going to Mrs. Raymond's point, I think that we're saying that there really is no vehicle with which to keep this moving unless some committee is formed to do it.
Well, there is a vehicle. I mean, it's called, as I said, Dr. Starfty and I working with our respective secondary and elementary.
No, I, I'm not, please don't, I'm not, certainly not diminishing what I believe the two of you are doing. That's not my intent. What I'm saying is though, that for instance, this specific bullying policy, in order to put, like Mr. Guarino was saying, we could, we could put a time limit so that, well, no, I'm sorry, that was Mrs. Brown. Anyway, the time limit, if you put a time limit, in order to put a time limit, it wouldn't make sense to do it if you weren't, if you didn't realize that it could happen based on availability of a committee to do it. And it would, three, four, five committees wouldn't do it. We're talking about, at some point in time, I just would like to know that there were people who met teachers who had an opportunity to sit down and talk about that policy and look at it and say, this is appropriate, or I think we could make this a little stronger by, by changing this word, or a little stronger by changing this word. There was even, and I couldn't tell you, and I probably should ask for this while, while I'm speaking, I do not have, I still don't have a working printer at my house. We paid $400. But anyway, it's not working. That having been said, in the future, when some, when this meeting, when, when this body meets, I would like to have copies for, I understand that we don't have, that, that a lot of waste goes into producing these copies. And I also understand that we, that funds are very critically short and that we haven't been making copies. But I'm sitting here at a disadvantage now because I saw, I actually saw in one of these, in, and I believe it was in the bullying one, where the, at one point it was referenced that the teachers were going to have rights. And then other places, it seemed to be devoid of that. So, and I, again, I was looking at it on my computer, on my screen at home. And so I can't do that now to bring it back up. But, but in the future, if we could have at least, you know, like I noticed that Mr. Guarino does not have copies either. And so I think that for the committee members to, to have copies at a minimum, I, I think, I think if I had to pay for them, I would be willing to pay for them. How's that? I would be very happy to pay for them. So I just think that, that it's a disadvantage to be here without them. And having said that, I was trying to get to the point where we could put some kind of time limit, but I don't think we can do it based on Mrs. Raymond's astute observation that there really wouldn't be, there really, it would be too, too many people, too many committees, too many, there's no specific place at this point in time to carry it. So, thank you.
But I think we're in a good position right now. Oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, I think we're in a good position. We're, COVID kind of put a pause on everything. And right now, we're kind of reassessing where the students are, teachers are obviously reassessing where they are. This is kind of a good, I feel like we're wiping this, not the slate clean, but we have an opportunity to take the information that we're learning about where students are coming from now and implementing all of this stuff in there. This is a great, we have kids with huge behavior issues coming back to school. What a great time to start implementing this stuff. And I think people are ready for a change. And I think people are, are dedicated to getting everybody back on track. And I think this is a good, I mean, Jess had the Mount Prospect people coming in. We have the, we have the resources coming in to evaluate what needs to get done. And then we can start looking at how it fits in with the plan that we've already agreed to. Is there any other discussion on this? Oh, sorry, Ms. Carey, you had something to say?
I think, I think.
Okay. Oh.
Mike.
I said, I think I'm good.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on this? She just said she had nothing to say.
That I had nothing.
One more time, in harmony now. Okay, so I motioned that. Who seconded it? Was it Mr. Guarino?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
I gotta turn the lights off.
Okay. So on sending policy, JICK updated people's safety and balance prevention bullying to the full board. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
No. Did you hear me, Jim? No. Sorry.
Okay. Boy, you put a couple of heavy hitters on tonight's agenda, huh? Okay, so the next policy we're looking at is a new policy, EBCF-A, Temporary Policy on Leave Due to Coronavirus Disease COVID-19. Do you guys want to speak to what this policy is?
Sure. Before I get yelled at, make sure I'm excellent. Okay. Right now, if someone is out and they test positive, they've got to stay home.
Do you have your mic on?
Yes, I do.
Okay, just making sure.
If someone is home and they, you know, or they test positive and they're home, right now they're using their own sick time. What we, what this policy does, it is encouraging folks to get vaccinated. And those who get vaccinated, if they do test positive for COVID, they would get an additional 10 days of paid time or sick time. Then they wouldn't have to pull from their sick bank. The city just recently did something similar to that. So we tailored this for, for us in, in terms of working to keep people in, keep folks in the classroom, but also encouraging vaccinations. So that's the purpose of this policy here. And what it would be is an extra 10 days of sick leave that doesn't take from their bank. It's similar, if you remember back in 2020, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act provided up to 80 hours of additional sick leave if you tested positive or were sick with COVID. So that's how we came up with that number, you know, the 10 days. So, and, and that's the purpose of this policy. And then, and it's temporary and, and until, as long as we, you know, and keep it in place and, until we feel that there is no longer a need for it.
Do we have questions?
I second.
You will second that?
Yes. Can you believe it? Troublemaker I am.
Did you make the motion? So I did not yet. So I moved to send policy, EBCF-A, Temporary Policy on Leave Due to Coronavirus Disease COVID-19, to send to full board for approval. I, I firsted it. Zim seconded, and now discussion. Mr. Guarino?
I have no questions or comments.
Okay.
I think it's great. I think it was wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, I was under the impression that we're not legally allowed to ask for vaccination status directly to employees.
We are able to ask for cards in.
Mike.
We are able, we are able to ask for this purpose here. And this is actually pretty similar to what the city is doing that has just been approved. And so we are able to do that.
So I have a concern here that the way this policy is written, there's no, so we're still asking that anyone who has a close contact with an individual has to, that tests positive, has to isolate or quarantine. But there's nothing written in this policy for any individuals who are medically disqualified or have an exemption for their vaccine. Is that a place where you could edit this? There may be some places where people have a medical or religious reason for not being vaccinated?
Well, the purpose of this policy was to encourage vaccines if, and that's, and that's pretty much, you know, the, the city, as I said, has done pretty much the same thing if, and that's exactly, it wasn't, there purposely wasn't any exemptions in there. If that's something you recommend, and I, we'd have to go back to Dr. McKinney and review that again.
And I do have a little bit of a concern with where the records be kept for individuals who do want to utilize this and show their vaccination card. Because I, I'm familiar with plenty of people who are vaccinated but are not comfortable with sharing their medical information with their place of employment or just the general public. So I get.
Well, we wouldn't be sharing it with the general public. We house quite a bit of medical information right now in Human Resources, and that's where the cards would be coming.
Would probably, would it be covered under HIPAA?
Pardon me?
What's that?
I'm sorry, we, Human Resources.
Yeah, if somebody, if you know someone's information, medical information, isn't it covered under the law?
Sure. And you can't, HIPAA, what is it called, the HIPAA law? Right, yeah. But we also have access to quite a bit of medical information right now.
Right.
And as, as a part of the role of Human Resources, so we would be maintaining the cards.
Is it under lock and key?
Our, our office is locked.
Thanks. No, I didn't mean the office, but the, the pile cabinet as well, right?
Our offices are secure.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I was trying to give you a hard time. I just wanted the public to know. Thank you.
And I guess, I don't have a vote on this, and I'm sure, obviously it's gonna pass, but I won't be able to support it when it comes to the full board. I think this is, I understand the purpose is to encourage vaccination. It's admirable. But the, this essentially forces vaccination on individuals who may or may not want it, or may not want to share their vaccination status. We require people to isolate if they come in close contact, whether they're positive or not. But we also, we're gonna charge you sick leave, sick leave if you don't, if you don't want to show your vaccination card, then you have to, then we're gonna, we're gonna punish you. But if you are, if you do want to show your vaccination card, you get a cookie. I don't know, I, I think it feels wrong. I'm sorry.
I hear what you're saying, but right now, folks without this policy are using, they are using their own sick time. So this is, again, just to encourage vaccines. Yep.
I have a question. So this is completely voluntary, right? And any, any information that any person gives you is completely voluntary, is that correct?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
And when they show, in the past, when I've had to show my vaccination record, they didn't keep it or make a copy of it. They just looked at it, verified, like when I got my last shot, they had to see that I'd had the other shots. So they looked at it, they said, you're, you're good, and they gave me the shot. So you don't, you don't take a copy of their records or anything, their shot records, or do you?
We, right now, we're not doing anything.
Yeah.
What is the plan for verifying their vaccination status?
Taking a look at their cards to confirm that they have.
And will you be taking a photocopy?
That's not necessary. I mean, we can certainly track it.
And how are we tracking? Do they need to provide the doctor's note that states that they're COVID positive?
Well, right now, we're, there's a whole process on the website in terms of if someone has tested positive. So that piece won't change.
Okay.
We have a high, don't we have a high, just, I'm sorry, these are just interesting questions, and I also think they're interesting for the public to know. I thought that we have a very high number of teachers who are vaccinated already. Is that correct? Do you know that number?
I don't, I'm, I'm not familiar with that, Ms. Zim.
Well, if you would check on that before and get back to us. I mean, we're gonna be here, we'll see you again, I'm sure.
Right now, we're not asking folks if, whether or not they're vaccinated, so.
But I just, I thought that there was, that they were saying, I thought I had heard on TV, 96 or somewhere, where they knew how many of our teachers had actually, the percentage.
I'm happy to look into that further, see what information we might have.
Yeah, I think it's pretty, I think it's a high figure. That's why I'm saying it, because I don't, and I, I'm not diminishing her, her point. I'm certainly, you know, not doing that. I'm just saying, I think it's an interesting number. Thank you.
I think we've got presented with numbers about how many people went to the vaccine clinic, how many adults went to the vaccine clinic. And I know a lot of numbers were floating around. Dartmouth Hitchcock up in Lebanon was the first, was the first medical facility to mandate the vaccines. And I think people were stunned that it was in the 90s right off the bat for employees who went and got the vaccine. But I think that's only with hospital staff. I don't think, because we don't have a mandate in the schools for the teachers to get vaccines, we don't really have any reason to have that information just to have. But, yes, Ms. Brown?
If I could recommend to the committee to consider putting something in here about having a medical exemption or a religious exemption to disqualify you from the extra benefit of having a COVID vaccine. I think the way this is written, it seems very highly grievable to me. I don't, I do not, I think, I, I feel like there is, this is like a serious violation of people's rights, in my opinion. And I understand it since, I know, I understand that you're saying it's an incentive, it's an incentivized temporary policy. I think the other flaw in it is that there's no start date or end date. If you have a temporary policy, I think you should have a temporary end date to reconsider.
Can I just ask you, I'm sorry, if there's something I'm misunderstanding? Because if I'm understanding, Mrs. Carey, look, I got your name, only 10 years later, I'm sorry. Anyway, if, if I'm understanding that, then if this person is disabled and cannot get the shot because of it, then the incentive wouldn't be a penalty for them because they were never gonna be able to get the shot anyway. I mean, they, they can't get the shot. So if you're sick, I mean, you're certainly not gonna, you're not gonna, if you can't, you can't do it.
My argument would be that do, there's, because we didn't put that in here, if they test COVID positive or if they have to isolate for any reason, they still have to use their own sick leave, even though it's not their fault they can't get the shot.
I see what you're saying. Thank you. That was a good clarification.
And I think that's why we also have the, the mask mandates in the school. So if we have people in the school who are at high risk and can't get the vaccine, by having the staff and the students continue to wear masks, we help protect them. So hopefully they don't get it because we're properly, we're prophylactically preventing the disease from spreading to them. So.
Right. But that doesn't mean that they should be punished because of their health's, whatever their health situation is.
Mr. Guarino?
I thought I had a question there, but it, it seems to me that, that this doesn't need an exemption because everyone's exempt. I mean, it's, it's voluntary. The fact that some people have a medical issues and they can't, that they can't participate in it, it's not a penalty. They still have their benefits. This is an extra benefit for people who go the extra mile and volunteer. And it's, it's, it's an incentive for people who, who are able to get the shot to get the shot, which in turn protects those people who can't get the shot because there's less COVID around and they'll be healthier. So I, I don't think it's a penalty for people who, who, who are, can't get the shot because of medical reasons. I, I see it as something positive. And I, I feel as though everybody's already exempt, so you don't need an exemption. You, you either, if you want to do it, you step forward. That's, that's just my take on it.
Ms. Zim?
I hear what you're saying, but I'm not, I, I also hear what Ms. is saying. I think she's saying that these people who cannot take the shot because they're, if they can prove that they have a, if they have documentation, proof from a medical authority that they could not take the shot, that, that, that they, they, they were advised by these medical professionals not to take the shot, and then for some reason they come up positive, then they will have to take, they will have to take their 10 days of, of sick leave instead of using the free time. And then if they, in the future, needed that sick leave, it wouldn't be there. So it could be, in that sense, a penalty. And so I would be willing, if the others are, to, to add that, unless Mrs. Carey or Mr. Parker have some, some thought on that, that would change my mind.
I would rather, if that's the direction the board would like to go, I'd rather revisit it because this, the city has already implemented this and the, the ask, you know, it was mentioned to us if we wanted to adopt a, a policy or a similar policy. And the purpose of the policy was to incentivize vaccines. So, right.
And we won't have another meeting for a month? Is that, do we have another meeting when it's our?
And again, right now, if people are sick, they're using their own. And again, right now, if people are sick, they're using their own time. This would just, again, be the extra 10 days for those that are vaccinated, which was the purpose of the policy when the city implemented it.
Well, and when they retire, my understanding is that they get that sick leave to a certain, quite a bit of it, actually. So it is, to some extent, a penalty of sorts. I don't know, I wish I were medical, because that would make you more, that would make you more qualified to make that judgment, wouldn't it? I mean, what are the medical circumstances under which you would be unable to get those shots? I don't know, so, but I, if...
I, I mean, I heard on the radio today that a doctor recommended that a woman in her 90s with heart problems should still get the shot, it's not gonna, not gonna affect them. That's, I mean, that's a good question, how many people cannot get the shot because of medical reasons? We don't know that, we're not medical experts, unfortunately. Maybe, maybe there are people out there, but I, I think it would be extremely rare if it was.
I wish there were a place you could go and easily find that out, excuse me, but I actually called Mrs. Bagley last week to ask her a question, and she has not returned my call, and I don't think that's intentional on her part. I believe she's overwhelmed. I believe that our medical people are severe, I believe that Jen would probably testify to that, aren't you in medical, too?
Yeah, and I know anecdotally what, what the answer is, but because I don't have that string of letters behind my name...
Yeah.
I mean, I could diagnose you with some sort of mental health condition, but...
Yeah, I do, you're right.
But I would be remiss to put any kind of answer on that, but the CDC website does have, what are the requirements for a vaccine medical exemption? So you can, I mean, you can do your own research, it's, if you believe the CDC is a...
So there are, there are exemptions.
...place to go to get information, you can get your information from there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Again, not trying to be argumentative here, and I don't have a vote, but I think from a community standpoint, it doesn't matter if, if you're gonna put the exemptions in here, it doesn't matter if it's 20 people or one person, you still, I think we're still obligated to protect that one person who can't get vaccinated or who has a religious exemption or whatever, and the legal qualifications for exemptions are, I think it's important that we protect their rights under this. Thanks, I'll be done now.
Well, Ms. Raymond, sorry.
I just want to point out that the CDC's website doesn't list any underlying medical conditions that would prohibit people to not take the vaccine. In fact, they specifically say immunocompromised people should get it, and those were the first people to be approved for the booster. Having said that, I, I understand Ms. Brown's concern, and we certainly don't want to, we don't want to disenfranchise anyone on this matter. I think that's important, but we don't make policies based on one person, we make policies on what's kind of best for the majority of people, and then I think if there are outliers, if someone comes up and is able to provide Ms. Carey or someone in HR with, I can't take the vaccine, and here's my doctor's note, or whatever, but I would like to access this benefit, then Ms. Carey has the authority, as the director of HR, to manage that on a case-by-case basis, and she could even come back to the board and say, hey, we have somebody who is an exemption to this policy, you know, can we do something about it? I don't think that that's something where we would not create a policy on the possibility that there might be one person with some, as of yet unidentified issue, according to the CDC. You know, that's just my opinion. Having said that, I don't think that it is, I think that if the city has adopted the policy, that we probably ought to as well, because we fall under the city. So, but I think that, well, that's what I think.
Okay, so, yes, Ms. Brown?
I know I said I was gonna shut up, but I changed my mind. To your point about not disenfranchising anyone, Ms. Raymond, respectfully, I don't, I think if we adopt this policy as written, I do not think that Ms. Carey has the authority at that point to accept anyone's exemption. If she wants to follow, if she, she'd have, someone would have to grieve this all the way to the board level for us to get, unless you, we could just, I think it would be very easy to write one sentence about if you have documented proof of an exemption, then you could alleviate the necessity of having to alleviate, to elevate a grievance all the way to the board level. That's, again, it's my opinion, but, I mean, if we, we have, we really should be following our policies.
Okay, so I'm gonna push this to vote, just because we have another kind of heavy-hitter policy to get to.
We sure do.
So on the motion to send policy E B C F dash A, Temporary Policy on Leave Due to Coronavirus Disease, to the full board for approval, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the next policy that we're looking at is policy CBI, the Superintendent Evaluation and Goal Setting. I believe that we probably do this in non-public, because I think we might walk down a path where we may be speaking in specifics about interim superintendent, and I don't want to break anybody's privacy or privilege, so I'd be looking for a motion to go into non-public?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so on the motion to go into non-public under... I know, I'm looking at it, Jimmy. I did hear that, I can hear everything.
91.
91A32C.
Yep.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Okay. So we are out of non-public, it is, we were out of non-public at 8:28, looking for a motion to seal the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion to seal the minutes, Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Okay, so looking to table policy CBI and CBI dash F2.
So moved.
I second. Can we hear me? I second.
I know, I started going out of a routine on that. So on the motion to table policy CBI and CBI F2, Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. So motion passes. I will, my paper went from looking good to looking bad, so I will type this up and send it off for notes tonight. Yes, motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, on the motion to adjourn, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Motion, motion to adjourn granted, meeting is over at 8:30 exactly. Thank you, guys.